Nate, are we recording? So are we live?
Yeah, we're live.
But you're trying to get in. All right, we will call this meeting of the January ninth, twenty twenty four Planning Commission meeting to order. Um, with a few items on the agenda, we'll try, first of all, we'll try and move quickly, uh, try and avoid, uh, any flooding that might be out there. Nate, first item we have on the agenda is the reorganization of officers.
Correct, so we just need to do reorg of officers. Do it every year. So, uh, Mark, if you want to take it over, you can. Otherwise, I have no problem, but, uh, essentially, we just need to, um, have a motion for a new chair for twenty twenty three. I'm sorry, twenty twenty four.
Yes.
Yep, so, um, members present, uh, do you have a nomination, uh, a motion for a nominee, um, for Chair of the Planning Commission?
I will motion to nominate Wes.
Is there a second? Ryan, second it. Um, okay, um, any discussion or comment from the, uh, commission?
No.
Okay, um, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, Nate, Wes is the chair. Wes, I'll turn it back to you to elect the, uh, other officers.
All right, so we're setting a vice and a secretary, is that correct, Nate?
Yes, correct.
Uh, so is there a, uh, recommendation for a vice chair person?
Make a motion for Martine.
Discussion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Uh, opposed, abstaining. Okay, so was that a yes vote? Okay, yes.
Sorry.
So we have a four oh vote for our vice chair, and then we need a nomination for a secretary. Either you two gentlemen, or do you want to?
I'll make a motion for Ozias, or?
There we go.
I will second that.
Great, discussion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Have four votes, four ayes. We have a secretary, we have a vice president and a president. All right.
All right.
Moving on, approval of the November twenty twenty three meeting minutes.
Those will be available next month.
Great. And then, uh, all business item number three on the agenda, sixty one thirty, sauerkraut lane subdivision preliminary final plan, if you'll come forward. All right, cheers. Thank you. Very exciting.
My name is Jeff Leishaker.
Hey, sorry to interrupt already, but can you guys speak into the mics? Uh, we can't really hear you on the Zoom.
Sorry about that, Mark.
No problem.
I'll yell that if that's what it needs to be. That a little bit better?
Perfect.
Okay. Um, we're here for preliminary final, uh, approval. I believe the last time that the applicant was before the board was the October tenth hearing, uh, that I don't think any action was taken. I think it was just put on a indefinite continuance to today, I think. Uh, and we're here, I believe, to be approved. Uh, the conditions that were provided to us, uh, just now, we did have some notice of some of these were coming, uh, and we do have some issue with some of the condition.
I don't know how. Uh, so you have it in front of you. If you felt more comfortable going through each one, or if you wanted to go directly to the ones that you went?
Sure.
That's probably the easier.
It's gonna be, well, there's, there's, Mr. Chairman, there's two issues and one that I tried to address with, uh, Nate today, and we just didn't reach each other.
Okay.
I don't have, uh, any evidence or a record of extensions of the ninety day window under the MPC at this point.
Okay.
The visual application was filed in May. There was an October, a July hearing and an October hearing. Uh, my records don't have it. I wasn't given any by, by my client, and Mr. Renko searched his records. It doesn't have any extension granted to the township, so I'm, I'm not trying to make a fuss, but if we're in a deemed approval state, then we're not going to agree to any conditions at that point, but I want to have, I was trying to engage in the conversation today about that, because I don't want to be in a situation where fighting with.
Yeah, I mean, the one thing that I did have the time to note, and you have to understand, we had a couple of sinkholes open up throughout the township today from other residents, so we were taking a lot of phone calls. Um, our records indicate that the actual application that was accepted by the township was in June, not in May. Um, there was a new one that needed to come in for June, so it was June nineteenth, um, that we did have. Uh, we are still looking in the file. We do believe that an extension may have been granted. In the fall, we're still looking for the documentation on that one, um, but on all other matters, just because that becomes then solicitor oriented.
And again, I'm.
But we, we want to move in a position to, to move this along as quickly as we possibly can. It's a minor two lot subdivision.
I, I.
And that, that's a very long process. This could be
Yep.
Done very quickly.
And I agree with you, Nate, on that, uh, but when we come to especially Mr. Chairman, number five of the proposed conditions with regards to the LOMAR. I don't know if you recall the October hearing. I wasn't here, but I got to watch it on YouTube. Mr. Renko asked me to watch his performance and give him a grade.
I failed miserably.
As it's noted in the, the review letter that, that was provided to you, this property went through a zoning review, uh, and got a variance from the zoning board to build in the five hundred year floodplain, uh, which is ironic that we're talking about flooding on tonight's, of all nights, uh, but, uh, to then patch as a condition to approval, something else to deal with the flooding, uh, seems a little bit, uh, sideways, honestly. We, uh, the applicant and the engineer, we're going to continue to work with the township to make sure this is a safe, uh, safe build. Uh, but if the zoning board found in its wisdom, without any objection from the township, to give a variance to allow us to build what was identified as the five hundred year floodplain, the variance, uh, to twenty seven A of the zoning ordinance, uh, with the prohibition of building in the five hundred year floodplain, to now require the applicant to file a LOMAR, and I'll let, I'll defer to Mr. Renko as to the process on that, the engineer. That's a long process and one I'm not sure that the applicant can necessarily be in charge of, since that is a countywide and a federal floodplain issue. I think the other four conditions, the postal service and following the review letters to the satisfaction of installing the trees, uh, and even the general access trail easements as shown on the site plan that's before you, those are not problematic at all.
Okay.
It's simply requiring us to fill an application out that is, uh, it's beyond belts and suspenders. This is belt, suspenders, a raincoat, uh, second pair of pants, and it's asking the federal government to do it, and it seems like overkill.
Okay.
Uh, but I, I, again, I would defer to Mr. I, I'd like Mr. Renko to educate me a little bit more about the LOMAR process and perhaps the board as well, if, if that's.
Right, yes.
Okay, uh, well, so the, there's a few ways to go about, uh, property that's in question with the hundred year floodplain, and I, and I'm more than happy to start from the very beginning. You guys have a minute, and I know everyone wants to get out here. There's, there's a FEMA flood, a hundred year floodway, which is a regulated FEMA regulates that, okay? Then there FEMA has a one hundred year floodplain. The one hundred year floodplain, normally FEMA allows people to construct in it, provided that the local, uh, county floodplain administrator reviews a, uh, there's a set of criteria, like is the basement floodproof, is, are they using it, or are they bringing any kind of fill, suitable fill-in? What kind of fill is it? Uh, is the, where's the lowest living floor in relation to the, uh, the, uh, BFE, the, uh, the base flood elevation? So, and that's all respective to the hundred year floodplain. FEMA doesn't even think about the five hundred. They've, they've, federal government's come to a conclusion that we, we want to end any question of insurance at the hundred year floodplain. Lower McCongee has a history of flooding and is very sensitive to it, and we, we all respect that at, at the table here. So they've gone a, they've gone a step further than the hundred year floodplain, and they've put in their zoning orders that you cannot do anything in a five hundred year. What we did was, we, we, we have a twenty two acre lot. We wanted to carve two acres out to build a house on the high, high ground of this twenty two acres. How, about half of that two acres right now is in the FEMA five hundred year floodplain, and the other half is, is out of it completely. The township sent their, some of the representatives to the zoning hearing, to our first zoning hearing board, to object to us doing that. Um, I, I believe the term, uh, I believe Nate was there, but I believe the township solicitor and I think the engineer were there to object to this. We were denied. Uh, we didn't have a study done. We didn't have a, a survey done, and it's a lot of time and money to do those, and we were afraid that if we did that and ultimately came to the zoning board, they would deny it anyway. We left that meeting with our denial, went back, did a full HACRAZ study on the applicant's property down, downs, downslope and, and just upslope of the stream, so we had a full topographic survey done. We ran the FEMA flood, uh, the, the FIS, the flood studies from the flood map. We ran the five hundred year flow through that HACRAZ model, and we showed that the five hundred year floodplain was well outside of these two, these two proposed, uh, lots. So there are two buildable acres on this property that a five hundred year flow wouldn't touch. So, and I'm designating that as the HACRAZ five hundred year flow. The zoning board, uh, that we submitted that HACRAZ study, we submitted all the mapping we did, submitted, um, everything else. We went to the zoning board that night. This was quite a while ago now. The township did not object to it, and we got our variance. We're now here to do a subdivision, as Nate said, for just, uh, it's a minor two lot subdivision to build two single family homes. The problem now lies that the FEMA five hundred year floodplain is still where these properties are, these houses are. But again, I'm, I'm on record, FEMA doesn't care if we build in the five hundred year floodplain. But the township is putting a condition on this being recorded that we have to do a LOMAR. So I, um, I, I would be more comfortable here if the township engineer, because I, you have more confidence, it's your professional. Have them, I'd like the township engineer to explain to, to the planning commission the process for a LOMAR. If, is, Brian, are you on the phone?
Yes. Joe, all right, so the township, while FEMA regulates the one hundred year floodplain, they also will regulate the floodplain as directed by the, the townships. The township zoning code twenty seven A, uh, four oh two, uh, specific prohibited uses within the floodplain references um, construction of new buildings. So the township code restricts construction of new buildings within the floodplain. As you stated, you are showing buildings to be constructed within the five hundred year floodplain. And therefore, we don't want to see you build something that is going to be literally underwater. Um, FEMA will review the five hundred year floodplain to verify that if you're going to go through a LOMAR, FEMA will review the five hundred year floodplain to confirm that the physical map, FEMA's map has changed, showing that you guys are no longer in the floodplain. So while I understand FEMA regulates the one hundred, or the specifically concerned about the one hundred, and the floodway, township ordinance requires that you cannot build within the floodplain.
And when you see the town, when you see the township ordinance, you meet in the.
Zoning ordinance twenty seven A four oh two dash two A.
So Brian, you're talking about twenty seven A four oh two?
Yeah.
Okay, and the variance was given.
Hazard areas overlay district.
Four, four, four oh one point two or four oh two?
Twenty seven A dash four oh two.
Okay, so the zoning board gave a variance with regards to twenty seven A four oh one point two, which says you can't build, and I, I think the language is very similar. But if the issue is that we haven't gotten, we got a variance to subdivide, but not a variance to build, I think we're starting to split hairs here. We can always go back and ask for an interpretation of the zoning variance that gave us permission to build in the five hundred year floodplain, based on the maps that Mr. Renko submitted to the zoning board that were not objected to by anybody there. Uh, we are now finding that the township now, after we went to zoning once, is coming back and saying we should have gotten second variance based on the next section, which was based on the same concept of the five hundred year floodplain. So we got a variance that we're allowed to subdivide in the five hundred year floodplain, allowed to do new construction in the five hundred year floodplain, which is twenty seven A four oh one point two.
Right, didn't the variance also say that to be reviewed by township professional and, or by the township engineer?
Right, so section eight says, paragraph eight of the zoning, or of the zoning decision, says if the requested variance is granted, the proposal would still need to be submitted to the township for subdivision approval, which is what we're doing. At that time, the township engineer will approve the floodplain study. Doesn't make it conditioned on that, doesn't mean that the planning commission approval is, that the zoning variance is conditioned on anything, it indicates that it will be approved. It's a weird decision in that way. It's not, it's referenced, and I'll, I'll give Brian that, it's, it's referenced in there, but it's not made conditioned upon the township engineer's approval. We have a variance, build, the subdivide, uh, because that's what we were told that we needed to get. And it feels like we're shifting, hiding the ball a little bit, Ricard Monte, to get us to have to go through the FEMA process when we're now, whether it's May or June of filing this, we're now six months after the fact. Uh, and this is part of the, and this builds into the whether there's an extension or not. So, you know, if we can't find that information now, without, without written, I'd ask that we get a approval as a deemed approval, that the, the planning commission give us without condition. I'm telling the planning commission tonight that I think the applicant would be willing to agree to some of these conditions, just not the LOMAR. And that we can have these, we can have this conversation, but it seems like we're playing word games. It's going to affect six months to a year of building time here.
We can in good conscience let you build in a floodplain. I can't in good conscience approve a plan that has a house that's going to be underwater.
That's, it's a health and safety and welfare issue.
Accepting that we have a variance allowing us to do just that, from the zoning board, which is a quasi judicial board whose rulings have the effect of law as to these parcels.
Jeff.
Yes, sir. I see it.
So the deemed approve, let me just touch on the deemed approval for a second. That's not something that the planning commission is going to issue some sort of a recommendation on, and that's a, you know, that's a legal issue that you and I can discuss. They're going to go through their process and make their recommendation tonight, right? I mean, I think you would agree with that. There's a procedure for deemed approvals, and you would follow that procedure, and we would, uh, respond accordingly, right?
And what I'm trying to do, Mark, is not.
I get it. I know you're not trying to, I know you're not trying to force their hand.
I need, I, I also need a record that shows that that's an issue, and I'm trying to, I, I tried to resolve it before we got here tonight, so that we have, I, I, we're trying to work with the township as best we possibly can. It's just that, and I understand, uh, Brian's concern as well. But where we are is we have a variance that says we don't need, that the, the, the floodplain issue is not an issue, but then now we come back and, and the second section, we're saying it's an issue. It's a, it's, um, I don't know what the right word is, confounding is a good word. Uh, because it, it feels like we got a variance, but then now we're being told it wasn't the right variance, uh, but I think it is the right variance. So we'll agree to, they obviously agree to conditions, but putting the LOMAR on, and I, I, we didn't really get the answer to it, but it's, it's applying to the federal government. My understanding is a LOMAR is something that they're not going to do simply for one property. It's a countywide conversation. We're now doing county government, state government, federal government. Um, and just judicial notice, that doesn't happen in a heartbeat. Uh, these are things that are going to take a very long time. I don't, I read it tonight that the condition is that we have to apply, but I'm not even sure technically what the process is for this applicant to apply without obtaining help from the township, from the county, and potentially other parties. That makes approval of ours subject to a lot of other people that we have to gather, and we're losing daylight every day, uh, to build.
I just, I just Googled how to, how to apply for a LOMAR, and I just got to a login page, but I am curious exactly what is the applicant, because it sounds like for conditional use, we're just asking you to apply. Is it just you go online and you put in the information they want? And are we waiting for Google from FEMA, or how, help me understand.
So procedurally, the way, procedurally, the way that I, that we had presumed that this was going to go is, is if this, if this condition is included, it would be an application made prior to plan recording. The plan would be recorded, and then it would go from there. So the applicant would have a reported plan.
So that we're clear, we're not waiting on approval or any action by FEMA, simply the application process itself.
Yeah.
And do we need, I don't know, Joe, do we need any, can I fill out an application online?
No, so, so, and again, I forgive my ignorance. Uh, Brian, you could correct me if I'm wrong. No, no, my, so I've filled out many, there's, uh, elevation certificates, and that's what we would normally do for a single family home. That's what a surveyor and engineer would do. They'll come out, and they would, uh, a house gets built, and there's a base flood elevation, and they'll, they'll measure where the elevation of the floor is, and they'll fill it out and sign it, and they'll give it to FEMA so that someone, a homeowner could get insurance on the house. A LOMAR, my understanding is a LOMAR is a, is a map change, that, that I, as an, an, an engineer for an individual, I don't even think I can submit that. I think that has to come from the county. Now, your engineer is the one who asked for it, so I'd like them, him to answer. I think it has to come from the county floodplain administrator. Am I correct, Brian?
We, we've had applicants submit LOMARs before. I mean, they, there is a application that they fill out that we review, but then they submit it to FEMA.
So, so I'm on a, I'm on, I'm actually on FEMA.gov. It says, and I'm on, on the page for a LOMAR. It says, I'm just going to read this verbatim. It says, "All requests for changes to effective maps other than those initiated by FEMA must be made in writing by the chief executive officer, CEO of the community, or an official designated by the CEO." That sounds way above my pay grade. So again, I have no experience with, uh, LOMARs. I don't, I'm not pretending to be an expert here, but I'm just telling you what I, when I saw this was a condition, and I read this, and then I looked at the timeframes for what a LOMAR is. There's a ninety day window of back and forth, back and forth, back and forth. Um, it will be over a year before a LOMAR gets approved, because it FEMA has to change, literally change the map.
But if we're just talking about the application, I think we're, if the concern is only that we apply.
So.
And the, and the result is irrelevant, frankly, to the recording of it, simply that we apply.
Jeff, that's not true, though. I don't want to argue with you, because you're my friend. They, they're, they're.
We're not your friend then.
No, 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 no. No, what, what, what Jeff, what you're, what Jeff is saying right now is he's trying to think that the plan's going to get recorded, which means that's okay, but at the end of the day, we don't, I don't, this woman here, she doesn't care about recording a plan. She wants to build a house for her daughter.
Got it.
So, so the problem is if we get the plan recorded and we make a submission to FEMA, and FEMA takes two years of back and forth with us, the, the county, and want, they want, maybe they want more properties surveyed, Noel's not going to get to build this house for her kids.
Even if we apply for the LOMAR, doing this for my identification, I'm also an idiot, comes to this stuff. Not an idiot, apologize. It's been a long day. Um, if we apply for it, that's also going to hold up EEP approvals, that's going to hold up building permits, that's going to hold up everything.
Well, the township engineer testified, or just mentioned that he's, he cannot approve a plan. It's in the flood, in a five hundred year floodplain. So that means we're going to, if this plan does get recorded, then it's on the applicant to prepare a grading plan. Grading plan is going to go in to the township for review, and they're going to say, wait a minute.
Let me, let me jump in here, because obviously, there's, there's a question here that needs to happen. I, I mean, I think that there's, there's obviously a level of concern coming from our engineer. I mean, our solicitor has some work to do on the, um, what relief was given at zoning. So, I, I mean, I think that there, I, I don't know that this can be resolved here. I mean, Nate, if you want to offer something that I'm missing here, but I mean, there, there's a number of larger questions that have come out of this.
Well, I would say if this is all spiraling around condition number five. Condition number five is not going to be determined, and it's not a planning related item. It's a technical related item, in which case if you wish to defer as part of your condition to the satisfaction of the town, and review by the township solicitor in concurrence with the applicant's engineer and attorney, and let the engineers and attorneys figure it out. Once they figure that out, we know whether it proceeds forward or whether it doesn't proceed forward. But I think that in front of planning commissioners, uh, this discussion could go on for quite a while, and it's well beyond street trees, sidewalks, and subdivision style. So I would note, you could make a recommendation. We could get this ready to proceed forward, i.e., with the board for eventual approval, meanwhile having the township engineer, the applicant's engineer, the township solicitor, and the applicant's, uh, attorney basically come to some sort of decision prior to appearing before the board of commissioners. Otherwise, we're going to be stuck in neutral.
Yes. Um, any input from other members of? I'd like to proceed with that.
I'm fine with that. I just want to know what service we would put in the condition then for the approval.
Uh, the applicant shall the applicant, uh, upon recommendation and determination by the township engineer, township solicitor, and the applicant's representation shall apply for a FEMA letter of map, or I'm sorry, a FEMA letter of map or revision.
So the condition is that we still have to apply for it?
No, it's that we're trying to get it so that you, the Mr. Fisher, Mr. Broom, and Mr. McAdam, who's not on this evening, can all figure it out, not in front of the planning commission.
So your suggestion would be replace number five as drafted with an, an additional condition that lawyers and engineers sit down and have a conversation about what it might look like when it goes before the board, uh, and.
It's just not going to be a productive conversation here, because it's.
Mr. Chairman, I agree with you wholeheartedly.
Great.
It's, it's going to be an interesting challenge to make it a productive conversation at the next level as well. Uh, I don't mind sliding things down the road, but I just want to make sure that whatever condition you're setting tonight is not one that requires us to apply, but requiring us to have conversations. Great. Just means that, that the board of commissioners meeting.
I don't think we're changing that. I think we're just moving it forward, so that you can move forward, and then doesn't hold you up here.
We need to make a recommendation, Nate, because this has been sitting, and I understand that we're splitting hairs with this item, and again, I, I think we need to leave that up to the design professionals and.
I agree with that part. That's what I'm trying to say is, we're, if we make a recommendation here, we're just moving it forward, but we're not making that decision that you're asking us to make.
But it, it's my job to advocate, my job to hopefully not have a condition, even if it's a recommendation that, that a LOMAR is required, that the application is required. If I can get that pulled off in any way, shape, or form, then, then I get to go home a happy man. I'm going to go home a happy man regardless.
Um, Nate, I don't think you're suggesting that we take that.
Entirely off?
Yeah.
No, I'm saying we need to have the design professionals and the legal representation.
It's not going to change.
Have a discussion, and if it's determined that the zoning relief that was granted includes it, then it gets, then it does go away, but that's really up to
Yeah, it's not up to us.
Them to figure out.
Agreed. I've taken the best notes there. You want to?
It was best as I could. I can write as fast as Nate speaks.
And we would just do that based off of, we don't have to read through everything again, as we've all said over and over, and instead of listing all nine items here, we could just say, as discussed and as written on the published, um, recommendation, which I know was a big item for this board, not have to read through everything verbatim.
So let's, let's move to some of the other items that are on there. Are there any other items that are of objection? So I think we understand where we're going. I just want to make sure that we have covered everything. We got stuck on that part of the conversation.
So, and there were, there were no other, uh, issues with the conditions, but, um, there was, on the, the, the letter that, uh, Nate handed us before the meeting, there was, uh, there were three waivers listed, and, um, I, I think you guys probably remember in nauseam, I talked about the whole, there was a fourth waiver I submitted, um, formally on January twenty seventh, Nate, uh, where we talked about the sanitary sewer connection. The applicant had this township SEO out. They did a bunch of testing for on lot. Um, therefore, we asked for that waiver to not have to be mandated to connect to, um, public sewer. Uh, I, I don't know that if, uh, if there may be, maybe even be at some point that maybe the applicant would like to connect to it, but. But at this point, we have septic systems parked on the, on the site. So we'd at least like to ask for that waiver so that we have the flexibility to do that, or she has the flexibility to do that.
For the record, and maybe the engineer wants to speak to this, the distance, there's a distance that usually.
1,000, 1,000 feet.
Right. And it is within that 1,000 feet, correct?
Yeah, I, I think on my waiver request, we were like, we're 940 feet away from it. So we're.
Is it one system or two? There's two.
There's, there's two homes and both of those homes, they had township out and they did park.
Right, but both, both share the same septic system?
No, there's, there would be an individual system on each one.
They're both 940?
Well, the farthest one's 940, which is, well, they don't, 755 feet, one's 940.
What's the grade change? What's the grade change between the lines and the proposed site then?
The grade change between.
Would they need a grinder pump to be able to go into a public system or not?
No, it's all downhill.
All downhill?
There's no flowage.
The existing sanitary runs along.
Actually, the testing was in the 100-year flood, 100-year FEMA floodplain. And it, and it passed. I wasn't there, but I think Mr. Zach Graezes was.
Anyone want to comment on that? I, I mean, I can share my opinions. I'd like to hear from others. If you have an opinion on that waiver. I mean, my personal feeling is, is pretty universal is that unless if there's a situation that makes it not able to be done and outside of that, I don't see the reason not to connect to it.
And honestly, in most cases, I would recommend to a client the same thing. But again, this is, I explained this at nauseam too last time was.
I understand that.
The rub here is that the township charged her a fee to come out and inspect it.
Um, I actually already note, we, we, if, if it's all about the fee, if that's all this is about, we could return the fee.
Well, she also paid, I think she also paid a designer to come out and do testing. There's a little bit more to it than just the township.
You know, Scott Bieber out there, your doctor's out there.
I, I understand some of that and, you know, you never want to see that where someone feels that they were done wrong. It, it sounds like that's how you feel about this, but I mean, the, the greater benefit, in my opinion, is that you're connecting to the, the sewer and that it's hard to argue that. And I understand that that's an imperfect answer. But the long-term benefit of being connected to the sewer is, is universal.
Let me try to understand this and I'm probably the worst. You know, I hire these guys, I come to the township and I look for guidance and assistance. I've been trying to build my daughter's house. Since when is it, Nate? That we, you said June?
Application was made in June.
The application, but before that I was in here. I talked to Carl Best. We went on Zoom meetings with you before that. So I come to the township to ask for assistance on which way to go. You come back and I was told we need to do, we didn't have enough for you guys to make a decision based on FEMA. I paid thousands of dollars, thousands of dollars. And I come back and I have Joe and his team comply to what you guys are asking me to do. All I want to do is build my daughter's house in a land that I am taking care of. I redid the whole stone house. It looks beautiful. All the neighbors tell me what it used to look like before. Okay? So come in here when we get this. Pay thousands of dollars to my attorneys, to everything. And then we give the township what they asked for. The engineer says he didn't have time to look for it. Time goes by and I come back here, not once, not twice. Time goes by and I'm asked to do different things and I comply. And then with the septic, I get Scott Bieber out there, your engineer. Now I'm told later, before I'm, I could put whatever system I want in there. And then I come back and I'm told I can't do that after thousands of dollars being spent. And then we're sitting here. One engineer is saying, absolutely no, the FEMA, I have to just apply. But that's not what I was told at the previous meeting. This, what is it, Lenar or whatever? I don't even know what this stuff is.
LOMAR.
Okay, I don't even know what it is. All I know is wherever I'm building my daughter's house, water never gets there. I have videos, I have pictures myself. So do any of you, I'm sure some have children here, do you think I would jeopardize my daughter? Okay, and build a house for her to be next to me? I understand, I, I mean, I don't think even the township ordinance clarifies what I can and can't do with my land. And then you guys are forcing me to go and get the government to change certain things in the FEMA and, and, and the floodplain. I just think I'm not getting the right thing here. I, I don't know what it is, but I don't think I'm being treated fairly. And I have to say it because that's how I feel. That's all.
Any additional comments? Any comments from the public? So that waiver that we just spoke about is not included in this. Does anyone want to change that? I don't think so. Yes.
I don't, I don't know, just because I don't, I don't understand the purpose of not hooking up to the, to the. I guess I need to hear what the benefit is of not hooking up to the public. Because I mean, it's not about being fair, us judging somebody or, you know, ruling against them or not making recommendations because of anything personal. It's more like we have this book of ordinances, right, that we have to follow. And we have to be fair with every single person that comes. And there's always exceptions to rules and we're asked for exceptions all the time. So we just try to maintain consistency. So that's where we have to kind of hold a line as this group before we move something forward to the commissioners. Because you might go to the commissioners and the commissioners are going to say the same thing that we're trying to say to you now.
And I agree, and that's what I was saying. So when I came in, tell me I can't, that's not allowed.
Right.
Tell me, why, why have me so.
And unfortunately, we're not here for that process. We're not here for that early stages. We're here now. And so that's why, you know.
I'm voting on what's right here, right now, and I understand the concern. It's clear to me there. But I'm voting on what I'm going to have to vote on many other times. You know, these same exemptions requests come up all the time. So staying consistent, and I think you'd rather it be consistent too, even though in this scenario, you're the one that's affected. I understand that. We've talked significantly amount of time about all of these items. I think they'd like to at least move it forward. Maybe your results will be different as you continue down the line. I don't know that answer, but for us, we can move this part forward without that waiver and what we discussed earlier in this, this meeting.
I feel confident with what I need to put down at this point. We've, we've made our objection to it, had this conversation. I have a feeling that Mark and Brian and Joe and Nate and I are going to have further conversations.
Yes.
On a number of different things before the commissioner. I appreciate you giving the lead win.
Of course. So someone want to make that motion to move as discussed, what we've talked about, forward?
So I will motion to, I will motion for the approval of three or 6130 Sauerkraut Lane Minor Subdivision Plan Condition Upon the Following As Provided To All Of You With The Modifications Of Number Five.
With the modifications.
Yeah.
I just want some clarity as to what the specific modification.
That was upon the recommendation of the engineer, solicitor, all you. Then you should.
Proceeding with technical review.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It's one of that.
Okay.
Very word specific.
Yes. Nate is.
I understand it's been a long conversation. I just need to.
I understand that part. I understand that part. And it's, it's, it's less than clear, but as discussed, I mean, the, the consensus of what we're looking to do is what we are doing now. That's not going to change.
Okay. And Mark, you're clear on what that, that solic, that, that, that is as well?
I was in and out on hearing you guys because of the mics, but is the, is the, is what needs to happen to number five? Just adding subject to further discussion by the engineers and attorneys, something like that? Is that what you're looking for?
Yes.
All right. So then why don't we just add that to the end? I mean, that's the recommendation. The board's going to make the decision, one way or the other, whether those conversations are fruitful or whether they're not fruitful. So I think just add that caveat at the end and go forward. If that's good with you, Jeff.
Well, it's the clear, I, good with me is a.
Much clearer.
But it, it's, it's clear now. So I, I have an understanding what the condition is.
Yes.
It's a matter of us to have a conversation and I'll reach out to you later this week, Mark.
So we have, we have a motion that needs to be seconded.
I second the motion.
Is there any discussion? Any discussion from the public? All in favor, say aye.
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 Uh, then those opposed, tensions, hearing none, so it's 4-0.
Thank you for your patience.
Yes.
Thank you, seriously for your patience.
Yes, you too. Thank you. All right. Next item that we have is the TopGolf preliminary final plan. And just for the record, if you all introduce yourself, I know who you are, but please introduce yourself for anyone watching.
Good evening. John McRoberts from Pittcock.
Good evening. Todd Waldo with TopGolf. Everybody's doing well today.
All right. You've received the conditional, the notes from the conditional approval. Anything you wanted to start on that was of concern?
Yeah, I should note, if I can, John, before we get started, Mr. Waldo, we're very excited to have you here. Thank you for coming in the bad weather tonight. We, as, as mentioned previously, and I think we mentioned when I advised everybody with the planning commission, we've spent a fair amount of time on the planning-related topics with this. The applications that we received are very technical in nature. Thankfully, Engineer Sisak, I guess he had lost temporary power or lost power temporarily, came back. So he's back on. At this point, we, we've really been relying on the engineers to chat with each other to make sure that the design components are appropriate. I know that a meeting was actually held just the other day. So I would just think we are more or less at the point where, I understand there are a couple of items that we have in here as conditions, based off of the recommendation of the engineer. But we don't see any remaining planning topics with this at all at this point. Especially since this is a standalone site for the TopGolf facility and not the overall mixed-use development. So I just wanted to lay out where we've been at at the staff level. We do monthly meetings, so we're meeting again on Thursday on this as well. So.
And I, I know one of those major items was the lighting, which is addressed in this motion as well.
Yeah, so with that, sorry.
For the entire process.
I had to interject.
That's come up in everyone and this is addressing that. So.
Yeah, yeah. We've discussed the lighting multiple times.
Exactly.
Brian and Brian from CKS were very generous. They carved out an hour and a half for me yesterday.
Yes.
Unexpectedly, we went through every item, how we're, how we're going to address each one specifically. And I think we're on the same page as far as how we'll address all of the engineering comments. So I, I think in the CKS letter and Nate's letter, we're happy accepting those as conditions.
Great.
There are, there are two conditions in the conditions of approval, number four and number five, specific to the lighting. We just want to clarify exactly how we plan to comply, just so we're all on the same page as we.
Great.
So just very quickly, I think you guys have already seen these. We handed these out at the conditional use stage. And then we have some new members, so maybe you.
Sample of like.
Thank you.
Yeah, that's a photo, an actual night photo, an existing venue in Glendale, Arizona. Now, that is a larger venue than what's proposed here. Uh, but it gives you a feel of what the appearance will look like at night with the lighting in the outfield in addition to the more traditional lighting in the parking lot. And certainly, I think Mr. McRoberts was commenting on item number four. Uh, and I'll just read that. I think everybody has this, this list of conditions. But all onsite lighting shall be dark sky compliant and no lighting shall be directed towards the abutting properties. And it's our understanding, certainly based on the conditional use approval that happened last year, that the outfield lighting that illuminates essentially the driving range component of it would not be, you know, it's essentially excluded from that requirement. That it's mainly just the parking lot that has to be dark sky compliant with cutoff fixtures and things of that sort. And that's not a concern for our standpoint. However, as you can see from the photo that's been illustrated and circulated around, the lighting that illuminates the outfield is more directional lighting. It is not a cutoff fixture. It, it is angled out into the field of play. Those are lighting strips that are mounted to hand, under, can underside of the canopy of the building itself. Not stadium lights or anything of that sort, but they are not dark sky compliant. So I believe the conditional use allows those lights.
Yeah, for, for clarification and, and on the two conditions, just so we're aware, the, the, the lights for the facility to light the field are not expected to be dark sky compliant by any stretch of the imagination. That condition for number four is really just on other facility lighting, specifically parking lighting, so on and so forth. So we should definitely separate those two completely. Condition number five is really just based off of, one, the public concerns that we had heard during the conditional use process. And it is the jurisdiction of the agency right next door. So I mean, that's just something where obviously we have the visual here where I think we have a local level of comfort with it. I think everybody's just looking for a final sign-off, make sure that we're okay.
Yeah, I, I think with that, I'd just like to open that up for a little discussion. TopGolf has built venues all across the country, along interstates. Whether the building is parallel to the interstate or it's perpendicular to the interstate, there's never been a problem. DOT does not have jurisdiction over that. We certainly, TopGolf intends to be a good corporate citizen and a good neighbor. We have the ability to control the lighting, dim the lights and calibrate the lights. They're not a impact to any neighbors, but we're fronting along a busy interstate. So I'm more than willing as kind of a gesture, a good neighbor gesture as a courtesy to supply some documentation similar to what we submitted to the township. But I don't want to be held to an approval from PennDOT to be submitted to the township. And I think that's very, very reasonable. Again, we've never had to go through that before. There's not been any complaints with respect to our lighting that we weren't able to adjust based on the feedback that we received. And we'd like to certainly continue along that pathway as well. So hopefully you all will entertain that. We will do that as a courtesy. But don't feel that there should be a formal approval necessary for PennDOT.
And just part of their, the PennDOT standard process, there's no, once you get a certain distance, our lights are over 800 feet from the highway. There is no specific process where PennDOT could give us a permit or specifically say yes, this is acceptable.
Right.
Okay, so that, so if you were to write into them, they'd say, this is outside of our jurisdictional boundary. We have nothing to say about it?
Yeah.
Or if they did say something, we're looking for just the feedback, but you're saying whatever feedback was received, you would comply? If it's reasonable?
I, I think that's very subjective there, obviously.
Reasonable, yes, I know reasonable.
Yeah, it can be very, very subjective, yeah. Be very subjective with, like, so the fact is, property today, there's a complete absence of any light. So anything you introduce to that property, other than what's there now, will be different than what exists. So there will be probably some. So there will be probably some complaint initially about light because it's been dark for years and years. I think it's just the natural adjustment thing as you develop property that I don't feel that it will be any impact, negative impact. It will just be a change.
Got it. I mean, maybe if I re-summarize that as you're willing to work with us to find a positive result that works for everyone.
You bet.
Anyone want to make that motion? I don't think there was any other items. It was just four and five.
No, other than that word.
Yeah. And just so we know, so for the waivers and deferrals, because there were numerous with them, it's really just going to be subject to making sure we're okay. And again, with with the township engineer, we're having monthly meetings. So it's instead of reading all those waivers.
I will motion. Because we were still learning the verbiage now, so I apologize if I, we all kind of hesitate and look at each other because we changed the verbiage a little bit. But I will motion to recommend approval of the preliminary TopGolf plan conditioned upon the following as you all have received and read and reviewed and.
Enough? Is there a second?
I'll second that.
We have a second discussion and discussion from the public and comments. All in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? Abstaining, hearing none. We have a four oh vote.
Thank you very much.
Thank you all.
Thanks, Nate.
Thank you all.
See you guys.
Yep, you're welcome.
Okay, so our next applicant, fourteen fifty Brookside Road. This is, to put it in context, and I'm going to pull it up here on the screen for everybody. This is another minor subdivision, one lot into two on Brookside. After East Texas Road, you can actually see the land in question right here. It is currently a singular lot. There's a single residence on the lot. You can see the dwelling here. There's also space here in the back and this is the guitar tape shaped pool that has been mentioned previously. That being said, the applicants have put in for a minor subdivision to separate this area, which consists of the dwelling and all the accessory uses in the pool with the remaining lot land here. You don't get much more simple. This is one of the, and you know, before we before we go into the the detailed and technical review where Brian can provide some of the feedback from the township engineer, I I would say from our perspective, there are a couple of things. One, there's existing trees. So normally where we require street trees, there are some full grown trees there. Credit can be provided for those trees. We would still want to see some other ones, preferably of the lower growing height so that they don't get haircuts from the utility company. But given the fact that we have old growth trees there, it's already starting out at a good spot. Second, the applicants have requested a waiver of a pathway along Brookside. That's something where it's difficult because as everybody knows, then you're creating a path to nowhere. But one of the most important things that we always say is this is our only chance if we ever want to have a pathway along Brookside Road to actually do it. You know, when a larger subdivision is done, like further down at nearly at the corner of Brookside and Sauerkraut, we were able to get the double frontage trail there. But when you start traveling north up closer to West Coastville, the only way to ever do it is going to be by a property by property basis. And if you were to actually look at the map, this is quite possibly the only large subdivisible property in that area. So and that actually brings to fact our third point. And you know, if it's okay with the applicants, I would just note it. You know, this is a simple subdivision at this point in time. It should be noted, it can be subdivided again in the future. We should expect just because of the nature that Lower McConge is a maturing township, larger lots for larger subdivisions are becoming less available. This would be a lot that would be able to be subdivided again. There is a stub road from harvest fields that essentially would be able to service residences in here. So we should think with an eye to the future, knowing that there could be an additional development out of this area in the future. And that's not necessarily a bad thing. Of course, it's just saying, you know, let's look ahead. So with that in mind, this is quite possibly, again, one of the simplest and easy ones that I think we've seen in my five and a half years here. But you know, with respect to some of the items in the design that are planning related, you know, it's great that we have the trees there already, but you know, we could use a couple more along Brookside there for the frontage like we always do. And getting that walkability is just, it's in every, it's in every plan we have. So I have to say it. I mean, all the way up Brookside. You know, we have greenway and trails planned for a reason. So with that, there are no other planning concerns or objections with this. It's about as easy as you can get in other jurisdictions outside of Pennsylvania. This is something that actually could go through almost administratively. So for that, I would hand it over to Brian for any other technical comments as part of their review. And then we would love to hear from the applicant as well.
Yeah, quite honestly, as Nate had mentioned, it's fairly straightforward. It's two lot subdivision. But also we, our letter essentially speaks for itself. There's really not all that many comments in here. I mean, I think it's a four page letter. So some very minor comments, but all items that we think can be addressed. So we have no, no major issues with this.
Very good. All right. Yeah. If you want to just give a very brief overview.
My name's Andrew Bowe from Hanover Engineering. I'm the design engineer for this project. And I'm in receipt of your Township Engineers Review Letter. And basically, I read through it. There's really no anything that we can't really deal with in it. It's pretty much self-explanatory. When we submitted this plan back in November, we asked for five waivers and what we would be doing is asking for additional waivers because of the Township Engineers Review Letter or deferrals. Like your planning director Nathan mentioned that this is a project that could, the subdivision of this property is most likely going to be subdivided again, this larger parcel. So some of the waivers that we would be asking for in this minor subdivision would probably be more reasonable to request they be constructed at during the second phase potentially of this project. So of the development of this property, I should say. So one of the things that I wanted to ask is with respect to some of these waivers we're asking for, I believe some of the other comments in the Township Engineers Letter would be more of a waiver or a deferral. And maybe we could just go through a couple of these and then we can clean up the plan, resubmit it and hopefully and have a an updated deferral slash waiver request letter. Would that be something that would be able that we could talk about? One of the things that I.
Before you go into that, can I just ask this question? It it sounds like it's very reasonable that you're probably going to do more to this property. Maybe not. But if you were putting a timeframe on that, what kind of timeframe are you looking at?
If we were successful in this minor subdivision approval, I would think that within less than 12 months from today, we would be submitting potentially a major subdivision.
So if and maybe you're going somewhere different with this, but I mean, if if you think that it's with, it's that imminent, maybe if there's just a requiring what you're, what was asked of you, but have a timeframe set on it so that it automatically goes into that. Maybe that's a more convenient way to do that.
I guess that would be.
You know, we'll we'll put a threshold there so that if you never do this, well, they do need to be done, but.
Well, and that's what if we talk about waivers and deferrals, deferrals would be that mechanism that you're talking about.
Correct.
That if the township so desired that you wanted a particular, the sidewalk or the the walking path along.
Yes.
That I would ask for a deferral for that in lieu of a waiver. We could show it on our plan that where we would think it would go, but if it would be, if this never came to fruition, the next phase potentially, then you could come back, the township could come back and say, well, we want you to put in this.
Yeah.
But other than that, one of the questions that I wanted to ask is pertaining to the right of way along Brookside Road, comment number three in the Township Engineers Letter is it's my understanding the township does not typically take right of way or dedication of right of way along state roads. So should we be showing that proposed right of way as a ultimate right of way?
Yeah. So so what we have, and this is probably about a twenty-four to thirty-six month process in far, as far as policy for the township. After discussion with the Township Solicitors Office and a lot of time in research, what we prefer to have happen is that the offer of dedication of the ultimate right of way be made on the plan. There's the high likelihood that what will happen is is the offer is made, but the township won't accept it. And then that way, it's at least offered per the ordinance, but we're not moving into a position where it becomes a small strip of right of way that then we we have dedication of. Now it's there in the future in case there's any ever, ever any other further improvements that might occur along that road. But it's not taken by the township at this time.
Then as far as the recreational, we would probably ask for the pay of cash in lieu or ask for a waiver on that. I, since it's a two lot minor subdivision, I don't know, I couldn't find where the would be for.
Uh, the fee you would, you wouldn't be paying for the existing residence lot. You'd be paying for the new lot and the fee is $3,800 per dwelling unit. So if it's a single lot, it's $38 per dwelling unit. If the lot gets subdivided again in the future, that fee for one lot's already paid and then the number of new lots that are created would then each for each new dwelling unit have a $3,800 recreation fee.
Okay. One way or another. Okay, I don't. Other than that, I know we just have to revise the plan and then and ask for some of these waivers and deferrals. We'll just clean that up. What would be Nathan, what would be the process now? Should we revise the plans and email those back to the township? Or do we? And what's the deadline for than the meeting for February?
The deadline for technically, the deadline for the meeting for February was today at noon because we've created a month long, we've created a month long. Brian, if I, what are, what's your feeling about the status of the plan and a revision and resubmission? Is it, is it one that is a will comply type of situation? Or would you like to see another submission prior to a recommendation by the planning commission?
Well, I guess my question is what kind of plan changes are you actually making? It sounds like most of your change, you're just basically going to reissue your waiver request letter. Is that correct?
Correct. And we'll have the waivers slash deferral letter updated. And then with with respect to the plan, we're going to move the ultimate right of way 10 feet because of our and possibly change the area of lot one, so we don't go over that 30% threshold. Basically, what the plan that you see in front of you will be the same mine with an addition of additional notes on on the plan.
Right, right. Because the impervious surface on that lot, if you shrink the lot up, you end up with, you're over the impervious. So I think
Yeah, I think.
Shift the lot line to kind of pick up some grass area. Uh, I would say if you're, oh, you probably don't want to push a plan through that is that the lot lines are going to change. So I think we want to see the revised plan. That's a substantial change. They'll want to see a revised plan, I think, before we even move forward.
If that's the case, I would say what we ought to do instead, and Brian, correct me if you think I'm wrong here, why don't we? We could look at this as being a technical review related item. And then that way it wouldn't come back to the planning commission. Andy, you'd be able to submit it at your pleasure whenever you want. I can't get you on the, well, actually, I I could possibly, but it depends on their ability to review. You'd be on in either February or March, most likely March.
Where the Board of Commissioners are here.
For here. And then you would go to the Board of Commissioners after that. But you wouldn't come back in from the planning commission until the township engineer has a level of comfort where we're ready to just recommend this and move it forward. So.
Okay.
We were feeling comfortable. I mean, aside from those minor items, we were feeling comfortable about it as of as of tonight. So if you're looking to make those revisions, technical reviews, the way to go. That would be the vote from the planning commission's perspective. Next time you see him, we're making a recommendation.
And then can, do you think that we should ask for, I would like to ask for a deferral for the sidewalk pathway along Brookside Road? At this, not this time, but for.
The next time you're in front. Yeah, I mean, if if we were asking for deferral, then you know, the the planning commission considers deferrals and 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 requirement for installation of of paths and sidewalks fairly regularly. So we would discuss that when a recommendation's in front of us again.
I'll motion to move it to technical review.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Discussion, all in favor say aye.
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 Those opposed abstaining, hearing none. We have a four oh vote to move this to technical review and then we'll see you back sometime, probably in.
Excellent. Thank you very much. Have a great night.
Thank you.
Okay, the only other item for the evening, North Crox Mcuse. They had, they had made a full plan submission to us. It's very similar to TopGolf in that we really spent a lot of time during the conditional use process getting its approval hashed out. They felt that there was no need to come in because there's so many technical items. There's no planning related items at this point. They originally asked to be tabled. We thought it might actually be better to put them into technical review as well. Because they're just going to go back and forth, making sure that stormwater and traffic and other design related items are maintained. You can either decide to recommend that. I've already spoken to Attorney Durso about it on behalf of her client, and she says that's totally fine. However, if you would like to look and talk about the new submission on planning related topics, whether they be buffers, berms, walkways, architecture, we can table them and they can make and they can appear before us again. But I'm telling you, after my review, there there really isn't anything. All those trails are still there. The amenities are still there. The landscaping plan is still what it is. The architecture still is what it is. They're really focused on traffic, stormwater, roadway design and other technical items at this point. So it's up to the pleasure of the planning commission, but Attorney Durso is already expecting a a potential technical review. So whatever the four of you would wish to do.
Does anyone disagree with that idea?
I'm on North Crox Road, right?
Correct.
Yep. This is new business?
Well, it's it's new business in that they submitted their preliminary final plan. Prior to your tenure on the planning commission, we had a very, very lengthy pre-application review, sketch plan review, conditional use review. So they've been in front of us for quite some time. I have to admit, the applicants have spent more than almost anybody else a lot of time voluntarily getting initial review upfront. So now we really are at the, at the, we're really in the weeds with things like traffic, stormwater. They had to make some changes to their stormwater design due to PPL easements, but again, that's just where the water is going. The building layout remained the same. So. And they did get their emergency access from the Turnpike Authority, actually. That was noted that that full approval was given. So if there's ever an emergency exit that's needed by the residents or need for first responders to get in, that that access is now solid, granted, approved.
So are we good with moving this through? All right. Make that motion again.
How am I motioning this to move it just to? How am I motioning this to move it, just to?
Yeah, I mean, approving the, um, technical, yeah, approving the technical review.
Moving it to technical review, not approving.
That's what I thought, okay. I'm, I motioned to approve to move it to technical review.
I second that.
Discussion. All in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? Hearing none. Four oh, again.
Alright, hour and fifteen minutes. Only fifteen minutes longer than I thought and was hoping for, so.
Is there a motion to adjourn? Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Adjourn.
Alright. Everybody next month.
That was a fun.
Thanks, everybody. Drive safe.
Be safe. See ya.